So, this is Julie Mack, the chair. I have 6:32, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And I do before we get going, since this is all new, we have a public comment time coming right up. And my understanding is that people would need to be calling in to this to make public comments. We do on the agenda have public comment at the end, but I believe we're going to have to take that out. We will have an executive session at the end, so we will be leaving this meeting and then joining a new private meeting for executive session, and we will just be adjourned when that's done. So I'm gonna move number nine, next meeting date to between seven and eight. And then we're gonna eliminate the public comment at the end. Does that work for you, Jackie?
Okay.
So, public comment. Seeing no unfamiliar faces, I think we can move on from there. And I do want to add one other thing before we get to norms, which is that I recognize that this whole week, right, is Educator Appreciation Week. And I apologize to the board that I didn't get my ducks in a row and get everything out, and it's time for you to review this. But I did write a letter to the Meadowwee staff that I would like to be distributed. I can email it to you, Brooke, and we can go from there. But I will read it now, and if you guys think there's something that I'm missing, we can throw it in. But, "Dear Meadowwee staff, on behalf of the Meadowwee School Board, thank you. Your work during this difficult transition is so appreciated. These are trying times for so many people, and you have all stepped up to support the children in this community. To take an existing education system, turn it on its head, and completely revamp it with no preparation is a daunting task. We understand that this is an impossible assignment, but that didn't stop you. Right now, we are in survival mode. There is still much work to be done. Knowing that our staff is alert to the importance, ready to forge ahead, caring and compassionate towards all of our children is a blessing and relief to not just our board, but our entire community. You have our respect, admiration, and most of all, our gratitude. Thank you, thank you, and thank you. Stay well." And then I would sign that. If there's anything missing, let me know.
I think you need one extra "thank you."
Okay, I'll put four in.
That's really good, Julie, that's great.
Yeah, excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, once you forward that to me, I will make sure I send it out to everyone.
Thank you. And Jackie, would you be willing to distribute it to your office, your staff as well? Because I recognize that we have more than just the people on the Meadowwee staff that...
Will do that, yeah.
...that have gratitude too. Okay, thank you all for that. And then if someone would like to review our norms?
I'd be happy to. Focus on student outcomes, be open-minded, respect each other, value different viewpoints, be responsive and responsible to our community, make decisions based on data and facts, listen to each other, be reflective, and run meetings that respect time, have concise agendas, are transparent, and follow Robert's rules.
Thank you. If I could get a recommendation to approve the minutes from our March 9th meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Michael. A second, Diane? Okay, all in favor? Oh, before we start that, though, I do need to do a roll call, so I will say all in favor, but then I will ask everybody individually. So if, I guess I'll start with Scott. Corey?
Well, I just had one thing was that I didn't nominate myself for a vice chair. I think it was Michael. I saw that on there.
I never even picked up on that. Thank you, Corey.
It just stood out to me, but yeah. But other than that, yes, I approve the minutes.
Okay.
Did you second it for yourself, though, Corey? Would you?
With one change. Okay, so Scott, we'll go back to you. With the change of Michael instead of Corey?
Brooke, do you have a question? Brooke keeps raising her hand.
I just wanted to mention something, is that the Rupert date, the library date on June 11th, or January 11th, I would just circle that because I was thinking that that would be when we were approving budget. And I don't know if we would need to be accessing the printer and wanting to change the location to the Meadowwee School versus the Rupert Library, only because that's the week that usually we focus on budget. Just wanted to put it out there.
Oh, okay, as far as next meeting?
No, January 11th.
Right.
We can change that in the future.
Yeah, right, okay. Okay, so one more vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Corey?
Yes.
Thank you. Michael?
Yes, I approve.
Okay, thank you, Diane. And Arlene?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda is the report of the superintendent of schools. So, take it away, Jackie.
Okay, on the agenda, Julie and I spoke when we were planning for this meeting and talked about, you know, next steps in policy governance. So, of course, as a result of the pandemic, our normal work plan is kind of, you know, thrown out the window. We were originally supposed to be meeting with Val this time. I believe the next two meetings, we had time with Val. So, the original intent was that at your June meeting, I would be bringing to the board a question to you, asking you if you wanted to enter fully into Phase 2 of policy governance, because we would have finished those final two sessions with Val. So I think it's important right now for the board to have some discussions about what you want your next steps to be. And Corey has had, you know, I know, has gone to some meetings earlier, so has some sense of policy governance, but she probably needs to, you know, spend some more time. We were gonna talk and spend some more time with training on that, and so we were gonna do that with Arlene, too. So, that's something else we have out there. So I just really think it's important for the board to maybe start to have a discussion. How do you, do you want to adjust your timeline? What, you know, what next steps do you want to make? Do you want to wait until the fall to then, you know, see if it's, we're in a place where Val can come back? And, you know, you delay that decision-making until, you know, later in the next year? Totally, you know, I just think the board needs to have that discussion as to, you know, what next steps you want to take, because we've been interrupted in our timeline.
Does anyone have that?
Can't hear you, Diane.
You're on mute, Diane.
You're on mute, Diane.
I didn't realize that, sorry.
I still can't hear you.
You came in for a minute, and now you're gone again.
I can unmute her, there we go.
Okay, am I okay now?
You are.
Okay, huh, because I never touched it. So, I think that, I think we probably need a little bit more time going into the fall. I still think we need to work with Val. From my point of view, I'd like to kind of still go through those opportunities, give Arlene and Corey some time to kind of get going also. So I don't, I think we need more time to work together on it. I, that's what I think.
Frankly, I would like to have some time so I really understood exactly where you were going on it.
Okay. So Jackie, we were going, our timeline was to make this vote happen in June, right?
That was going, yeah, we were, that was, you know, kind of the plan. So we were set up to move into transitioning new as you started the new fiscal year. But it's not a big deal. I mean, you know, I can chat with Randy and talk about what I would recommend for you for next steps. And I think we should maybe think about, you know, what kind of training could we do? Let me think on that. What kind of support could I give Corey and Arlene in the meantime? What could we do? And see how we help them get up to speed. And it would be wonderful if at some time in the next, you know, month or so, we're able to have some face-to-face time. I just, who knows what the, you know, who knows what the projections will be around that? But let me think about what I could do for some support there.
Okay. I personally, I hesitate to put too many eggs in the basket of when we get together.
Yeah.
Because it seems so up in the air. But I see no reason that we can't put off this decision. It was, it was said, it was based on the idea of going into a new fiscal year with this set of, with this type of governance. But we can always wait. And my only concern is that I don't want to go too far down the road without continuing our practice and work on this, because it is concerning to me that we'll just start to sort of forget these points. That's all that I worry about.
Yeah, I'm not worried per se, but I think this is something that we're all eager or interested to learn more about, and we would need it, I think, to be able to have a larger dialogue with other school boards, et cetera. So it feels to me like we sort of all agreed that we would want to continue it. The one other thought I had was that perhaps this Zoom format, and I don't know how long this may extend itself, but it does make certain things more accessible than they might have been otherwise, which is kind of interesting to think about, but I guess true. I don't assume that we could have, we could have policy governance lessons or meetings that don't have to be face-to-face and in person, in other words.
Oh, our teachers, there's more, you mean, there's more flexibility with scheduling? Yeah, yeah. Maybe Val would be interested in doing something. You know, remotely, I can ask her that. That would be interesting. We do all seem to have more time in our schedules, or more flexibility in our schedules. Okay, do you want me to pursue that? See if she wants to entertain that?
I would say yes.
I agree.
Yeah, okay.
You know, it would be very nice if we could find a place where I could come down and really get internet so I could go on to Zoom if we're going to be following a procedure like that.
Yeah.
I wonder, Arlene, if it might be possible to utilize the library?
I can certainly ask.
Yeah, because I know in the past, they have made keys accessible, and then you can pop in there.
Yeah, that would be wonderful, because I'm really at a loss up here.
And the one other thing that just occurred to me that I would be perfectly willing to accommodate would be to come down to our shop. And we just got fiber optic installed there, so...
Yes, I know you did, lucky you.
Well, I don't know about that, but in any case, we could make it available for you, and that might be an easier way than dealing with the library. But in either case, we can certainly make that happen.
Okay, okay, you and I can talk about it when we know what needs we would need.
Great, okay.
Yep. Thank you.
So, what is the timeframe with this? You vote to adopt it, and then at what point does it go into place? Does it get phased in? Or, and how long does that take?
Yeah, the phase-in, I would say, is pretty lengthy. So, once you make that commitment to adoption, it will, it will take you two to three years to have all of your policies in place with all of the monitoring reports established. So, if it gives, like, for example, this year with Taconic and Green, our goal was to have four of those monitoring reports in place. And I think we have two, because we got interrupted, too. And we had, and, so it is taking us a little bit longer than we wanted it to. The good thing for you is that you will reap the benefits of us having gone through that with Taconic and Green, because all the hard thinking as to interpreting what those policies mean has been, you know, we've done that, and we would have done it. So it will be so much easier the second time around to kind of show you that and to have discussion with you about this is how we interpret it and what it means to us. So you will reap the benefits from that. So your turn on time to getting fully up policy governance with your policies on place, it may be half the time of what it was for Taconic and Green, because we'll have models for you already. So I would say, once you say yes, that we do want to go in this direction, you should probably count on about two years to get yourselves in a place where you're feeling that you have everything in place that you need. And, you know, it takes, I mean, I even say to Taconic and Green right now, they're still an emerging, they're still an emerging policy governance board. I mean, there, if you think of a continuum, it takes a long time to get your, to get your head around that and to operate fully that way. So you should expect that it's a learning process for several years. So be gentle with yourselves around that.
I was supposed to be keeping track of the evaluations that we were gonna hand out at the end of the meeting. So obviously, we, at least this meeting, we can't. I don't know, in the future, is that something we're putting on hold? Or would we do something where people fill out something and email it to me? Or we just kind of put that on hold for now? I don't know.
So we had put that on hold for this meeting, so to have this conversation. But I think, you know, I'm certainly hearing from the board, you want to make sure you keep going down that path and doing the work. So I'll think about maybe even a rehearsal for the next meeting, you know? Maybe you can do another practice. If we cannot, if we can't get Val to be there, maybe we'll do another practice session. So we'll just make sure that there's always still that, you know, a part of this work on your agenda, so you keep, you keep it active and alive.
Okay, and you still, you had promised me a binder, so I'm still expecting that when we get back together.
Oh, what was that? Oh, that's right, a binder to keep everything...
I didn't want you to forget.
That was, you're talking specifically, Scott, about the evaluations at the end of the meeting, right?
That's right, yeah.
I'm wondering if maybe for the next meeting, one of the things we can look at is creating a Google form that is completed electronically. And for those folks who don't have internet, we could, you know, mail them hard copy. But then that might be a way for you, Scott. We can put you as sort of one of the owners of the form, and then people can develop, can complete it, and then you can aggregate it and then report out. You know, at least for the next couple of meetings, it might be something to try.
Were these anonymous? Were these anonymous? I can't remember. Were we trying to keep them anonymous? I mean, I'm just wondering electronically if we need to, like, you know, mail them to you, and then you would mail them to him?
Well, there's ways. So with Google Form, you can either collect people's email addresses or not.
Oh, okay.
So you have a choice when you're developing the form. And so if you want to know how people did, you can include their email addresses. But if you don't, it can, it would be completely anonymous coming to Scott.
Even more so than the forms with our handwriting.
Right. Okay, that sounds good.
If you want, I'm happy to bring something up to share with you, just to take a look at.
Since you were talking about a binder, did you people have a binder for your policies?
No, they were just gonna give me a binder to put these forms in.
Yeah, I knew what you were talking about, but that made me think about the policies. And of course, I don't have the other policies that you had worked on.
Well, we have all the policies online at brsu.org under your school district, but if you want, if you want a policy binder, we can ask Celeste to put something together.
Oh, I have plenty of binders here, I just wondered.
Okay.
All right, now run them off from brsu.org.
Yeah, you just go to Meadowwee School District, and everything is there. Okay. The next in your packet, packet page six. As you can imagine, with everything that's going on, we've now starting to really tune into some of the financial concerns that we'll be facing in our state in the next year and probably the next couple of years. Sat in this afternoon again, Joint Fiscal ran another meeting projecting what we might be looking at for deficit in the Ed Fund. Same, wasn't really anything new that I hadn't heard earlier this week. They're projecting a deficit now of, you know, $152 million in the Ed Fund, which is a, is a pretty good chunk of change. So given that, and given that we do not know if there'll be any decisions made at the legislative level to do anything with budgets that have already been approved, that would take some legislative action if they were to say all budgets that were approved need to be reduced by 3% to 5%. Who knows? I mean, but they could do that. We could anticipate that something like that might happen at the legislative level. But barring that, you have an approved budget. And what will happen going forward is that, that budget will be your budget. The yield will be set by the legislature sometime within the next month. And you could have a dramatic increase as a result of our budget, a dramatic increase in tax rates to your voters. That was far more than we had anticipated. And you won't be alone in that. Everyone across the state will be involved in that. Right now, what they are looking at, of course, there's money, you know, the care money coming, and there's a lot of conversation going on right now. Can any of that money in any way be used to provide any tax relief? There's a lot of discussion. I don't know that that, that that is something that can happen, because that money is supposed to go directly to the school districts and not to the state. And we fund, we fund our education. It's a state program, so, you know, it won't go directly to the state. But I think they're trying to see if there's some way that they can gain some flexibility so it could provide some tax relief. So I tell you that story because you will, it's going to be challenging times, challenging times in the next couple of years. So, given that, we are taking that seriously at the central office level. And Randy and Sue and I spent some time this past week, and we very carefully went over our current spending. And we felt at this time that we should revisit that attrition plan and that commitment to taking advantage of attrition when we can. And as you know, you as a board approved last year. I have in my packet, you know, reminded you what you approved. And that approval was to look carefully, if we should have any resignations or retirements, to look carefully at our staffing patterns to see if there was any possibility for any reduction of staff. And so we took a look at that, because since the budget, since your approved budget, and your approved budget, you did already take advantage of one retirement and reduced your, you know, and that's reflected in the budget that was approved by the voters. But since that time, you've had another resignation of a classroom teacher. So we took a look at those, took a look at those numbers, and I'm recommending to you at this time that we not fill that position. I think that you have the capacity in your school with your class sizes that will be close to in keeping with that projection, you know, with the class size that, that we're recommending. And I think right now, we need to save where we can save and be as responsible as we can and show the taxpayers that we're doing that. So I've put in my recommendation to you that we would not fill that position. That's an additional savings of $85,000. And we've also taken a look at your paraprofessional support, and we're gonna reduce that. That one, that's really based on student need. So we're going to move one of those positions out of your budget, and that person, it will be reassigned to another school, because now all of the staff works from one, you know, they all, they all are in one bargaining unit. So that person won't lose their job, but they'll be reassigned to another school, because we have some needs in some of our other schools. So we don't know where that will be yet, but that's what would happen. So that, if you make that, I do want to be totally transparent. We make that reduction in that staff. We don't fill that position. We will have one primary class that will be right at the top of that, you know, will be right at the top of what I think is a good optimum size. We'd be looking at a third-grade classroom that will be probably 20 students. We'll watch that carefully, and I've spoken, Brooke's fully aware of this. She feels that it's doable. And we'll watch it carefully. If things change, if we get a lot of kids moving into third grade, we'll have to have another plan, you know? We'll keep a close eye on it. But at this time, that's my recommendation to you. I think that we need to save money where we can save money.
Now, would we, is this an action item that we would have to deal with now? Or it's simply at this point in discussion phase? Do we have to make some kind of a motion and vote on that?
Well, you already approved, I don't think you need a motion. It's, you already approved that attrition plan. So, you know, you've kind of given, in that plan, you gave me the authority to take a look at that. So this is where it's a little bit interesting. So, and it's a good teaching point for policy governance. So I very intentionally used the language with this board that here's my recommendation for, I think, what we should do regarding an opportunity for attrition. And tomorrow night, I'm making, it's the same, we have the same issue to Taconic and Green. There are three positions that we're not filling. And they are policy governance boards, so I didn't even make a recommendation. I just said, "We're not doing it. We're not filling those positions." So that's the difference. You know, I view it's my job to make those decisions, but you're not fully a policy governance board yet. So it's, I feel like I'm a little bit in this gray place, and you have approved that attrition plan. But I guess I'm gonna lead that to the comfort of the board. That's maybe, puts it on Julie a little bit. But if you feel you are in a place that you want to act on that recommendation, or else you can, as a board, just say, you know, go with that. We leave that up to you.
I'm gonna ask a question. So what about, like, in, say, two months from now, you discover there are, like, six kids coming into the school and maybe some special needs? So what does that look like?
Well, then we make a decision. That's when, you know, we have a conversation with Brooke. Do we need to fill a position? Do we need to advertise for position? Or do we have other flexibility within our system? So the other really complicating factor right now is, and if you've been listening to Secretary French at all over the last week or so, I think it's highly unlikely that it will be school as normal starting next September. So I think you can fully anticipate, and he keeps saying, he said it again today, until there's a vaccine for COVID-19, you can expect that we will have some type of hybrid approach to education in the state of Vermont. So what does that mean? I mean, I think, you know, and again, Randy will be working a lot on this over the next couple of months. She's pulling a task... She's pulling a task force together to, to work with educators in our district. But I think you're going to be looking at a model that it's not all kids in school all the time, every day. You know, so, so what does that mean for class size? You know, so I think there's a lot of unknowns right now. So I think we have to be flexible and we'll have more information in a month. And it may say, you know, maybe the model will say you can only have 10 kids in a classroom. And for most schools, they would not be able to respond to that. So they'll probably would have a staggered approach to when there was con-, you know, maybe some kids come to school from nine to 11:30 and some kids come to school from one to three. I don't know. I mean, I'm just throwing ideas out there. But, but my point is that I, you just, we just do not know what it's going to look like in the fall yet. And hopefully over the next few months, we'll get better at nailing that down. But we just have to be in a really flexible place right now. So I'm making this recommendation to you, knowing that we have to be incredibly flexible and our minds could change on that.
That sounds very reasonable to me. The plan sounds reasonable. And it also sounds like you've taken into account the potential or even likelihood of having contingencies that we'll have to fall back on as the circumstance alters. And that seems to me an appropriate response, given, you know, as Julie mentioned a few minutes ago, how many unknowns there are still about what this might look like in the fall.
Yeah.
So my take would be that we go ahead with your recommendations and, uh, you know, do our best collectively and individually to keep informed of what's happening.
I just want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak to this issue if, if they have something that they, that they wanted to add.
Yeah, I did want to add something because in listening to the national news, it certainly looks like we're going to have to do something different come fall than we've ever done. But now would be a wonderful time too, to think of different ways that we can educate, maybe even approve the methods we use for education in view of the fact that we probably are going to have to do a very different type of schedule.
Yeah. And I think Randy, it might be, Randy, it might be good for you to share. Randy's been asked to sit on a, a state level task force. Might be a good chance, Randy, for you to kind of share what that is about.
I'm sure. So I was asked by the agency that to be a part of a COVID-19 state level task force. At this point, the, the task force is charged with three, kind of three primary questions to answer. The first question is, what resources do teachers need right now to, instructionally to best meet the needs of students? The second one is regarding what type of professional development training teachers might need? How might the state provide that level of training? And the third one is, you know, how, what do we do for the future of education? What does the future of education look like in Vermont? So the, the folks in the task force represent public schools, independent schools, think tank like virtual, virtual education leaders, sort of progressive, innovative educators. We all responded to which question was priority. The significant majority of folks, including myself, expressed interest in working on this, what, what might it look like? Committee. So it's supposed to, the committee's supposed to be, the task force is supposed to be in place for the next few months. It will likely extend longer than that. Arlene, in response to your comment, and I am in complete agreement with you. And so I've reached out to principals and, you know, the con- I keep, I keep being the person to say we have to be flexible and nimble with everything we do. When I'm dialoguing with teachers and leaders about what's coming next and we default to kind of traditional thinking, I'm, I'm constantly got voice saying, we've got to be thinking a little differently about this. Scott, even your question about class size, I don't even really know what that's going to mean in the future. I have no, for the first time ever, the numbers that are on a page might mean absolutely nothing. We don't know how many families are actually going to be interested or willing to send their children to a brick and mortar school. We have no idea how many second homeowners or folks who thought about moving to Vermont are leaving more urban areas and coming here. And we might, you know, the numbers for the first time in history mean nothing. What we do know is that financially, FY21 is not looking great. And more importantly, what's the impact of that going to be even moving forward in FY22? So how do we, you know, the recommendation is based on both short term and long term potential long, you know, financial impact. And we don't want to put any district in a place in which we are overly liberal now and generous now, which ends up having a multi-fold impact down the line. And you're facing catastrophic financial issues in FY22. So I think we've got a whole lot going on here. There's a tremendous amount of opportunity. I am, I'm actually kind of excited about the possibilities, but it's going to be hard work. And none of us have any idea what's coming. But I, I'm with you that I, I'm excited about what the possibilities are for our, our children.
Randy, one of the things I'm thinking as you are talking here is we really need to, as a educational group, begin to make a push to do something about technology. Because I'm pointing, in fact, I have a youngster who lives about half a mile above me on the mountain with absolutely no means of technical communication, no internet. Just moved in and it's something that we really need to think about very, very seriously.
Yep, you're absolutely right. And I know that that's a big focus of ours now. And as I pulled together this task force of folks to really look at possible iterations, we will be considering all of the, kind of, all the factors that can impact or be impacted by the decisions and the modeling that we do. Absolutely, technology is a piece of it. There are layers and layers of complexity to doing things differently. And, and, you know, I've, I've said to the principals, I already know of two areas that I want to make sure we've got members of this task force focusing on. One is equity. The other one is social emotional learning. Probably one of them should be technological impact. So literally, we've got people who, when we're making decisions, are asking questions related to those, those broad areas, you know, well, how is equity going to be impacted by this? Are we creating inequitable opportunities we need to address? How will we make sure that we're supporting the social emotional needs of our children if we move forward with this model? So the idea is going to be to be as holistic and comprehensive as possible to have as many educators who are forward-thinking and creative, the problem solvers, and to come together and to, to model out what it might look like. And so I'm excited about that. And we do have tremendously strong teachers who I know will be able to partner well with us on this work. So it's all, it's, it's nerve wracking and for fear inducing, but it's also really exciting.
Yeah. Okay, I, um, I do want to make sure everyone gets to comment as much as they want to. But to your point, Jackie, I don't think that we need to make a motion on this. I think that we have designated this authority to you when we first started this attrition plan. And I think in the, you know, in the mindset of moving forward with policy governance, we should just let you do what you want to do or not, you know, what you want to do, but you should do, you should be able to work within the box that we have already given you.
Okay.
And I did, just the board, I think you'll be able to get this information even if you didn't participate. But the VSBA had a webinar very recently. And I don't even know what day it is anymore, so I can't tell you when. But it was, it was, uh, what we're doing and how we're doing. And it was all sort of COVID related. And one thing that really stuck out to me was board chairs saying that what, what they had given to their superintendent and the superintendent's agreeing that this was one of the most important things that they were given, is just the freedom and space to do the work that they need to do. And I, I just think that we need to give you that. I think we need to put our faith in you and Randy and make sure that you're, you know, working within the box that we give you. But that, that you have the space to make these calls, these tough decisions in a very fine time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I think that we'll, we'll watch it carefully.
Thank you. Is everyone else comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yeah. I just want to note, I don't think I'm getting VSB, EBA emails. I'm pretty sure I, I haven't gotten them from them. Cause I've heard people reference some things and they're not in my box. So I'll follow up with Celeste, I guess, or who, who do, who gets that?
I think maybe, you may just want to go right to VSBA.
VSBA, okay.
Yeah. Shoot them. I mean, they've got a contact page on there. Just say you're a new board member, because we did give them that information. But who knows, you know, there's been a lot going on for them too. Just to make sure you get on their list.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I just had noticed, actually, that's what the second reference to a webinar and I hadn't gotten an invitation for it.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Email Sue.
Sue Sagalsky.
Yeah, we have an insider.
Maybe she's watching right now, if she's really bored.
Got nothing else to do?
I can't see her with nothing else to do.
The next item I wanted, I included an update for you on, on transportation because I fielded a couple of questions from two different board members. And I just want, I, so if that was happening, I knew this must be out there. And I wanted to just make sure publicly I spoke to it. So just wanted you to know that we received a couple of inquiries regarding our contract with Betsa and student transportation. And we had made the decision to not sever our contract with them or to back out of that. Because at the time when, you know, when all of this started to happen a few, a month ago, however long it's been now, we, of course, we're not sure how long it would last. So we thought we might need them again. And we also felt that, you know, we wanted to keep, we did not want them to suffer as an organization because we will need them in the future. We will need those bus drivers. We will need their service. So we made a decision to keep honoring the conditions of our contract, even though they were not providing any transportation for us. And we, last week, we learned that Betsa made the decision to stop paying their drivers. And we got a few inquiries asking, why did you make that decision to stop paying us? And we wanted to be clear that we are not their employer. We have a contract with Betsa. That decision was made by Betsa. It was not made by us. So that's how we've responded to many employees of Betsa who have asked us that question. It was not our decision to do that. But when we did find that out, Sue and Greg Harrington, and I'm not sure if Derek was, Thomas was part of that meeting too, they did meet with Betsa to say, hey, this is what we heard. So if that's the case, then we would expect some reduction in our contract if you've made that decision to no longer pay the driver. So we're awaiting to their response on that. And I'm, I'm sure that we'll hear that at, at any time in the near future. But I just wanted you to know the real story on that.
Thank you.
The next item on your agenda is, we wanted to, given financial challenges, I thank Sue so much. She really did a lot of work to give us an update right now on where she believes will end this year. So that you kind of have a sense of, a little better sense of financially our situation. So you can see from, from her report that we had originally anticipated a deficit of 157, 157, $347,000 going into next year. That was in your budget. That's what we had anticipated. And it looks now that the deficit will be around 89,000. So that's, that's good. That's a help to your budget for next year. But we anticipate of about an additional 68 that we had, you know, we had planned on that whole deficit. So Sue, I don't know if you want to speak to anything and I'll turn it over to you.
No, I mean, I, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. There aren't a lot of additional expenses that right now, I think, we're going to incur this fiscal year due to COVID-19. We, you know, we did include some extra expenses for supplies and technology, things that I know we've been spending money on at the central office to support all schools that will allocate out at the end of the year. So there's a little bit of that from the conversation that Jackie was referencing today that we had on the state call. I, I don't know, I was, I felt good about what they were talking about, about the federal money. It, it seemed as if they were leaning towards maybe not pulling that money back from us. I mean, we don't know for sure, but they did give us some guidelines on, if it does come to us and we get to keep it, what, how we would use it. And, and that was really helpful. And I think it will give us some guidance on covering some of these additional costs that I've put into this anticipated presentation for you. So I, I, I mean, I'm pretty positive about where we're going to end the year. I think really, as Jackie said, the, the conversation has to be around, what, what is it going to look like next year? And in, into FY22, because it's, it's the, the Ed Fund and how is that going to hit our tax rate? So we want to make sure we are being as careful as possible so that we have surplus to draw from if we need it, so that we don't have to hit our taxpayers so hard. Does anybody have any specific questions about any of the adjustments that I made?
The other thing I think is important to share with you too is that we have also, we're looking a lot, you know, we're making some reductions at central office level. Randy is doing a really scrutinizing special education. So there are some reductions that will, you know, that you'll be part of your assessment too, that you receive. So I just wanted you to know, we're not just dealing with teachers. We're looking across the board. Some of you are frozen. Julie's frozen. Michael's frozen. Okay, there you go.
I just had a quick question. Is, is the district, are you all applying for these PPP loans? I'm not really familiar with how that might come down to. And I don't want to go down that rabbit hole if it's a big and involved thing. But I just, it never even occurred to me that you might be eligible for.
I can't, you're garbled. I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Can you hear me now? Is that better?
So I, I got your question, Michael. Jackie, Michael's just asking about the PPP money and whether or not we're eligible for it. Can we apply? No, we're not. As a government entity, we're not eligible for those funds. But we do have, there's elementary, secondary money that's set aside under the CARE Act that's going to come directly to the LEA. So that's the money that they were talking a little bit about today that if the state doesn't figure out a way to pull that back or decides not to pull it back or maybe doesn't pull all of it back, we get to keep some of it. We'll be able to spend it on some of these, some of the expenses that we have right now, including paying staff when they're not working, you know, those kinds of things. And, and then we'll be able to use it towards many of the things that Randy was talking about that we're going to have to put into place, things that we're going to have to spend money on next year in order to get things up and running. So.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have budget questions for Sue? Okay. Sue, thank you very much.
Sure.
We appreciate that. Do you have anything else that you want to add, Jackie, or are you all set? Okay. Brooke, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. It's great to see all of you. I wanted to kind of give you an update on how teaching and learning is going at Meadowwee. So you'll see from my updates that we, right away, once we had school closure, jumped online. There was trainings that were being offered at the BRSU. B1 was leading some of those kind of online e-learning opportunities. And a lot of our teachers took advantage of different tools that they would be using for leading their classrooms. And some of those tools consisted of Google Classroom, CSO, which are platforms we use for communicating with parents, Screencastity, which is being able to record themselves doing book talk. Um, Screencacity, which is being able to record themselves doing um, book talks and other things. And being able to just learn how to manage um, online learning. Um, and they have been very helpful. Uh, Kelly Alfelt, it's been a strong leader um, with being able to lead um, similar kind of trainings. Um, and those trainings were, are held at grade levels, um, individual teachers, um, small groups, depending on what they need. Um, and she's also leading our at-home website. Um, it's a, and I put those both in the agenda, but just a great resource for parents, um, how-to videos. There's also things that she's leading as a librarian, um, poetry of the day, um, information on how to log into some of the online resources. Um, our preschool team is rocking and rolling with lots of online learning and they videotape every week. And Kelly helps to upload those to the um, kind of the preschool website. Um, and then every week she gives us tidbits of technology, things that we just need to know. And they've been extremely helpful. Like one thing that we needed to do was use Google um, Meet as a way of um, teaching our students in classrooms. And right away we realized that we could only see like five kids or six kids and we needed to add Google Grid to our um. Chromebook so that students could see all their classmates. And those are just tidbits that she would learn um, at different places and then share with all of our staff. So that's been going really well. Um, right now, all of the teachers have submitted um, their eight-week plan. Um, that kind of talks about the proficiencies they plan on teaching, their plan for collaboration amongst people within our own school and the B R S U. Um, they had to submit their daily and weekly schedule, their office hours, and the different types of platforms they would be using to communicate with their families. Um, and then a plan if they become sick, what they would do. Um, right now, um, majority of the teachers are using Google Classroom as a, a way of kind of having kids know their assignments daily. And for them to um, turn in their assignments. Um, I think it's been going very well. Um, students are actively submitting and very proud of the work that they're doing. So um, examples are if there's an art project for Ms. Harris, they're taking a picture and uploading it. Um, it may be recording themselves playing an instrument or the recorder for music. Um, and then for guidance, it's listening to a social emotional video and then being able to answer some questions in regards to that. Um, and same with library. She is still continuing to teach, like for example fairy tales. She's reading fairy tales, having the kids compare them and submit some assignments. Um, our students, our teachers are reaching out to our families for extra support. And the biggest thing we're noticing is a lot of. A learning curve for our parents and being able to understand how to get onto Google Classroom, view the assignments and be able to submit them. Along with being able to get their kids onto Zern, which is a, um, a math resource. Um, I Excel, which is another math skill resource. And Epic Books, which is a way for kids to read books at their level. So those are just ways that we're helping and supporting our parents. Um, we do use um, Zoom for our faculty meetings once a week, and that's been really great to see all of the teachers. Um, our teachers are joining um, horizontal team meetings with other teachers in the B R S U, and that's been very valuable for them. Um, we have our one-to-one special education services in place um, to support our students with um, the services that they need. Um, and our reading specialists are doing the same thing. So the students that were receiving their support continue to have their support. Um, our guidance counselor is connecting with our students and families to support them. And I have assigned a small group of teachers, a unified art teachers, our school nurse, guidance counselor, and two pair educators that are working remotely. To make additional calls to our families to check in with the parents and students. Um, and that's been very effective. I think the most important thing as we're going through this is just. Continuing to have those strong connections with our students and our families. Um, some of the positive things I've noticed, um, our food service program has been working very hard at producing meals. We have over a hundred students that we serve. Um, and then because we are delivering Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays, we're producing over two hundred meals, including mi- um, milk and juice. So a lot of um, supportive people are making that happen. And we're also delivering all meals to the houses. So there's no one that comes and picks up, but every, the delivery happens three times a week and we cover a lot of um, geography, as you know. From West Rupert, Allpallets, um, to some backroads. So I definitely know that the families are very appreciative of that. Um, and we are also producing additional food bags for our families with the backpack program. That's something I've created a few years ago and I'm very. Um, grateful for the supporters um, locally that support our program, but we're able to provide them just more food, um, including. A gallon of milk at Stewart's amongst other foods that, that's helpful, especially for those that have multiple children at home eating three meals a day. Um, we have provided a lot of one-on-one conversations with our families that need the extra help, that are reaching out, saying that they're, it's hard for them to complete the work. Um, and the teachers are being very flexible with that. Um, our building is really clean. We have a lot of safeguards in place to make sure that when the people are coming in, they're signing in. We have protocols put in place. Um, and the custodians are then on disinfecting and cleaning the areas that are most commonly used on a daily basis. And we're seeing a lot of positive collaboration between our um, teachers. Um, whether that be a special educator or reading specialist or our um, specials teachers. Our UA teachers are joining our class meetings, which has been really valuable for the kids. And um, for them, I think they feel very disconnected right now, the specials teachers. So having them join class meetings have been really helpful. Um, and I'm seeing some of our students really thriving using our online tools, which is great to see. Um, they're just submitting all kinds of work and are really engaged with their teachers. Um, some of the, the challenges we've mentioned, um, just our, some of our students um, are not engaging as much with um, the weekly assignments. Internet, for the most part, we did a survey. We only had three families that actually didn't have internet out of a hundred and seventy. So that's awesome. Um, but within some of those that have internet, we know that the, the connection is not stable, causing sometimes classroom meetings hard for them to join and participate. Um, a couple of challenges, um, we have a few families that are not lis- um, answering their weekly phone calls, and that's kind of worrying for us. Um, I do know that the receipt, some of these families are receiving food and we at least are there three times a week. And for those same families, we're actually delivering their learning packets with their meals. So today that happened, um, just to make sure that they got the information. Um, so we're working on ways to connect with those. And I have had maybe assigned other people besides classroom teachers to call those families, just to see if. The kids or families will reach out to other people within our building. Um, the teachers are putting in definitely long days, working from home, starting very early and ending and supporting our families. Um, and the, we just know the learning curve has been very steep for everyone involved. And it's really sometimes challenging to meet those parents' needs. Some of them feel like it's too much and some of them feel like we need to, to challenge them more. And so we're just trying to meet the kids where they're at and where their parents are at and giving them the support they need. So questions about remote learning at Metawi? No? Okay. Um, just to kind of give you an update, as you know, since school's not in session, there'll be no state testing. Um, our sixth grade trip has been canceled. I know it's a disappointment for those that are sixth graders. Um, Books and Beyond, um, we, we will be meeting today, um, this week. Um, with um, the three people that are helping me plan, which will be um, Mrs. Alfelt, our librarian, Lauren Kelly and Kim Donaldson, our um, reading specialist. Um, and we're finding a way to make sure we're celebrating our readers. Right now, we're noticing kids are really doing an amazing job reading at home. Um, and our hope is still to purchase them a book um, for their um, efforts in reading. And the way what we're going to do that is have a virtual book fair versus a one-in-person. Uh, and also using the Northshire Bookstore. We've been using them as a vendor all year. Um, to see if we can make sure kids can pick out a book on their own, so they'll still get that reward. Um, and we could possibly give that to them at the end of the, at, at the end of the school year. Um, and then we're going to brainstorm ways to feature them. So we will come up with a plan by this week and communicate that with the families through our weekly messenger. So one way we're keeping our connection with our families is that we are doing within our, like within our school, a daily bulletin to kind of give updates with our own staffing. And every Thursday, we're actually emailing the messenger. We used to print that, but now we have everyone on their, um, on email. So we're able to feature our kids and what they're doing on their, at their home homes. So it's a really good way for kids to see each other. And Heidi Hamel's continuing that work every Thursday. So it's great. Um, graduation, we have nineteen sixth graders um, that will be graduating this year. Um, and we're figuring out ways um, to really celebrate them. One of the things that we're doing is allowing them to have more space in our yearbook to feature um, uh, more information about who they are. And then we're going to create a few pages of pictures from pre-K to six, um, celebrating them, their years at Metawi. Um, and as we get more guidance from the governor, we'll figure out what that graduation celebration will look like. Um, but right now, we're just thinking of a slideshow or other ways that we can feature them and start creating that now. Uh, we were not able to hold our kindergarten or preschool screening. Um, right now, we're planning on, we actually got a call today. So we're planning on sixteen kindergartners. Um, joining us from Metawi. Um, and we will be right now having one, as we think, having one kindergarten teacher, Ms. Baker. But we will be sending out all the enrollment online. So this week it'll go live. So we're able to get our families registered by having them um, just do it. Um, through a link. So that's really exciting. And same with our preschool, we met as a team uh, virtually on Friday to talk about numbers. It looks like we have at least twenty-five preschoolers for next year. So that's really great news. And we will be um, enrolling them through the link as well. And the last thing I mentioned in my report is that we've been working hard to keep our building clean and safe. Um, we have clear expectations for our staff members entering our building. And we do have it limited. People are asking, um, right now, the, 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 the teachers are maybe coming once a week, if that. A lot of them are working from home. And um, there's never a given time where our building is ever really busy. Today was a sort of a busy day because we had food service. And are picking up for our learning packets, but our food service program was done by ten thirty and we were done by about one-ish from the pickup. So overall, our building is not occupied a lot in the afternoons or evenings. So. Any questions about my report?
No, thank you, though.
Yeah, thank you, Brooke.
I know Bob Niles was supposed to join tonight. I don't see him on here, but he will be joining my meeting tomorrow with my teachers. But we are going to try our best to feature um, positive things that are happening within our schools. The B R, B R S U is working on that with Bob as well. So we're hoping to put out, you know, some positive articles about what's happening in our school. Um, if you haven't seen it yet, our staff did put together a video. Um, and I would actually send, I'll send a link to, link to all of you, but it's just a wonderful thirteen-minute video. Of our staff, um, telling the kids how much we miss them, which is great.
Bob is actually watching on YouTube Live.
Oh, great. Awesome.
He's not missing a beat.
I highly recommend everyone watch that video that Brooke is, if you haven't seen it, it's wonderful.
Really good.
Yeah.
How would we access that video, Brooke? I'm sorry.
I'll send you the link tonight in your B R S U email.
It's also on the Metawi Facebook page.
Good. Yeah, like us at the Metawi Community School and that, you can see all the updates too. Today, Mrs. Lewis was dressed up, giving out packets. The kids absolutely loved it.
Yeah. Kind of love that Metawi spirit.
Yep.
Um, is everyone all set with Brooke and her update?
Yeah, thanks, Brooke.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you so much, Brooke. It's really helpful, I think, for us to hear some more, you know, concrete steps of what it, what it is looking like. I know, I mean, I'm seeing it, but a lot of, Cory's seeing it, but a lot of the um, other board members are, are only seeing it, you know. Maybe third-hand or hearing things in the community. So it's nice to hear directly from you what, what school looks like now.
Has anybody heard how the parents are dealing with the kids at home?
Oh, everything's great, Arlene.
I just wondered.
Um, I have, that, no, it's a good question. I was, I was teasing, but yeah, I haven't heard, um, I haven't heard as a board member, any complaints from parents. Um, you know, I have a couple of friends that we text back and forth and there's good days and there's less than great days. Let's put it that way.
I think there's a full spectrum of all of it, Arlene. I think some are really enjoying their time with their families and really, really embracing the learning and doing lots of family projects and virtual trips. And it's been great. I think others that are working, some of my dad reported that they were working eighty week, eighty hours last week. And it's overwhelming if you are um, a nurse or an essential worker, putting in extra time right now and juggling the full-time job with teaching.
Yeah, yeah. I just wondered, I have, uh, my kids have three of their college students home. Uh, doing distance learning. And I think it's been interesting.
So not to get too far off topic, because I do want to maintain a little bit of a schedule here, but I do want to say that was another. Um, it was a really great question that someone asked in that, um, that webinar that I mentioned. Uh, where someone said, do you think there's going to be a surge in homeschooling? And it was interesting, the, the super that answered the question was like, you know, I don't know, maybe. And I'm all right with it. And I think we have to sort of, um, we have to really think like, everything's on the table at this point. And I think we just need to realize as a board that the best thing that we can do is to do the best that we can do. In educating everybody. And it might look really different when, when school opens back up. As far as the comfort level that parents have sending kids to school. Even, even above and beyond what our, um, what our government tells us we can do. It might look very different just on, on personal preference and safety of their, their own family and how well people are doing at home. There's probably people doing so well at home that they're like, I never knew I wanted to do this and now I want to do it. Um, and there's people who are going to be like, get, to get, get on the bus. Go. So it's going to be very different. And I, I think, um, I think we just sort of have to learn to embrace this change. And think of it, like Randy said, as a very exciting time when we can really, uh, you know. The restraints are off and now's the time for us to just really just throw everything at a wall and see what sticks.
I agree.
Okay, um, so moving on, I'll move on to board updates. If anyone has anything to update? No? We're all set? Okay, um, so we have our next meeting is June eighth at six thirty. Which will probably be very similar to this, right? Will, it will be Zoom, I would assume. Okay. Um. And so I guess at that, if we're all set, then we're ready for leaving this meeting and going into executive session?
Right. I just tried to schedule that other meeting, but I don't have enough juice to be on this one and do another, schedule another one. So. You'll, if you give me like a ten-minute, right, what time is it now? Seven forty?
Forty, yes.
Let's ship back together at maybe seven fifty. So I'll, I'll get off here and I'll get you your, I'll, I'll email you your new invite information, okay?
Okay. And I just, um, so if anyone from the public watching live on YouTube has questions or concerns regarding this meeting. At the B R S U website does have all of our email addresses. So you can contact um, the board and we can hopefully address any concerns that you have. And we really appreciate the public's patience with us as we learn this new stuff. Yeah, thank you.
Celeste, are you there still?
Yes, I am.
Celeste, um, and I'm trying to think about how best to expedite this. What if I invite, I'll send you an invite to the executive session. Only for the purpose of you having the information that then, would you mind reaching out to Arlene for me and giving her that? Because she's going to need an ID number and everything.
Okay.
Okay, can I?
Deal.
I'll include you in that so, so she can get to in that while I get set up with the meeting, okay?
Okay, and so we're adjourning this meeting at seven forty?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Good. Bye, guys.
Bye, everybody.
Quick as a, as a Zoom neophyte. So I'll be waiting for a message from you and then follow it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.